The Town of Plainville. Established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our town council meeting. Today is October 2nd, 2017 at 6:00 PM. Would you please stand for our pledge of allegiance and Councilwoman Tom Pitts will lead us.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do not have any presentations tonight, but we do have two public hearings on our agenda. We'll deal with them separately. The first one is in regard to our sewer user fee. I will ask the town clerk to read that one, and then I will ask our town manager to give a brief overview as to what this public hearing entails. So, Carol?
Notice is hereby given that in accordance with Section 7-255 of the Connecticut General Statutes, Plainville Town Council, acting as a water pollution control authority, will hold a public hearing at 7:00 PM on Monday, October 2nd, 2017, in the council chambers in the Municipal Center 1 Central Square to consider the sewer user rate for period November 1st, 2017 to October 31st, 2018. Copies of the proposed rates are available at the office of the town clerk during regular business hours. Date is at Plainville, Connecticut, this 21st day of September.
Thank you. Robert, can you give us a brief overview as to what this entails?
Sure.
We've talked about it a lot, but just for the purpose of those that may not be aware.
Sewer user bills are sent out each year on November 1st. Generally, in late September, early October, the town council sets the sewer user rate for the November billing. Back in 2015, the town council had a rate study done in anticipation of the phosphorus upgrade project, which was facing the community with regards to making improvements to the wastewater treatment plant. That project is moving forward, expected to be considered at referendum at the end of January. It's estimated to be somewhere around $15 million. In anticipation of the impact of that particular project on the sewer user budget, the town council, after doing the analysis of the rate study, determined that the best way to handle that would be to gradually increase sewer user rates each year rather than wait till the project impacts and have a large increase to the sewer user rate. The decision was made that after some analysis, that increasing the sewer user rates 4.8% each year for probably through the project would negate or would be enough to negate having to have a 25 or 30% increase in sewer user rates when it impacted. So, tonight's proposal is to increase, is to follow along with what the council has done since 2015, which would be to increase the sewer user rates by 4.8%. That would make the minimum charge $386.24. The minimum charge is, probably covers about a little bit more than half of the people who are on the sewer user or are on the sewer service area pay the minimum charge. So, for most people, it would be an increase of about $18 a year.
Okay. Thank you for that. I'll open up the public hearing right now. If anybody wishes to speak on the first public hearing regarding our sewer user fee, please step to the podium, state your name and address. Does anybody wish to speak during the first public hearing on our sewer user fee increase? Mr. Kislik?
John Kislik, 65 Forestville Avenue. I think the council should give the people a break this year. Can you tell me how much money is in our sewer fund balance right now?
I don't have those numbers at this time.
Well, here's my point on that. How can this council make an educated determination on an increase when you are up here and you're going to vote on it? This is something you should know before you vote tonight. I don't want to hear nothing from the peanut gallery. This council should know that. You should have those papers. Now, the other thing, as far as I'm concerned, this should be a capital project when it's done. It's mandated by probably state and federal. We should not be having this increase to cover that every year. I think we need a break, and it's time the council gives us a break. When a project is ready to go, we have a capital project. You go to referendum, whatever you have to do, and we borrow the money to do this. In the meantime, you go after Murphy and Blumenthal because these are mandated by state and federal to get us more money instead of what the state's giving us now. I'm asking this council to waive it this year. Minimum fee, $386. You have people that are just struggling by one person household, and they're using a fraction of the water with somebody with three people, and they have the same rate. I've been arguing this for years and years. Give the people a break this year. Don't do the increase. Let's wait till we have to do this. You can bond the money and pay for the rest of the project then. Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? Joanne?
Joanne Edman, 166 West Main Street. I couldn't have put it in better words than what John said right now. He put it succinctly and understandably, and I agree with him wholeheartedly. Give the taxpayers in this town a break. We're dying, like that one that's on the air saying, "We're dying," you know, too much. We're getting hit from all sides. Money here, money there. I mean, it's ridiculous. How much you want for the schools? How much you want for sewer? It's just too much. Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? Does anybody else wish to speak to the council at last time? Thank you for your comments. I will say that this council has tried very, very hard to get a better grant proposal from the federal government. The federal money comes through the state, so we have to petition the state to get an increase on our grant opportunity for this project. We've written letters. I've testified at the Capitol. We've contacted our legislators. We've done everything we can to try and get a better position for the Town of Plainville regarding this upgrade, which must be done. It's a mandate. This is not a choice that we have. We have to get this done, and the council is trying to mitigate the impact to the rate payers. So, we have done that. We have gone to the state. We have tried to get every possible dollar we can, and this is where we are right now. I personally think if this is a mandate from our federal government, they should send the money along with it, not just 42%, but 100%. But that's not the reality. So, I do want to let you know that we have done what we can to try and help out the rate payers here in town.
In effect, those efforts have paid off to a certain degree in terms of, we did get some increased funding from the federal government and the state that saved probably the local share of about $2 million. So, still a significant local share, but those efforts have paid off to the tune of about $2 million.
Okay. If there are no other comments for this public hearing, we'll move on to our second public hearing. Carol, you'll read that one first, please.
Notice is hereby given that the Plainville Town Council will hold a public hearing at 7:00 PM on Monday, October 2nd, 2017, in the council chambers of the Municipal Center 1 Central Square in Plainville to hear public comment on the following. Consider an additional appropriation of $580,000 to the capital improvement plan. Date is at Plainville, Connecticut, this 28th day of September.
Thank you. Before we take comment from the public, I would like to call our superintendent of schools, Dr. Maureen Brummett, to the podium to give us a few words regarding this, and also Mr. Bustle, if you'd like to expand on that. We'd appreciate your thoughts as well before we take comment from the public, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Maureen Brummett, the superintendent of schools. A few weeks back, Mr. Bustle presented to the town council about a plan to secure boilers for the middle school as well as some lighting savings for the town. And although there'd be an initial expense down the road, we would see savings in our energy bills. I'll let Mr. Bustle speak to the particulars of that momentarily, but today, this matter became even more urgent when I was notified this afternoon that one of our boilers has failed, and it cannot be repaired. The boilers are past their useful life. They have lasted more than 25 years, and they've been taken very good care of, which is probably why they've lasted as long as they have. I forwarded a picture earlier this evening to Mr. Lee that shows that the boiler's leaking all over the place, and it just cannot be repaired. What's very important for everyone to know is that if the second boiler fails, and school is in session, and it is a cold weather pattern, I will have to cancel school for the middle school because I cannot run a school without heat. And that's a state law as well as just something that I could not do. So, this matter has now become more urgent. So, I would ask tonight that, as folks are making comments, that that is part of that thought process, that we now are living on one boiler, and if the second one does fail, we will not be able to hold school. My understanding is that if a boiler does fail, it takes several days to secure a temporary boiler, and that's optimistic. It may take a week or so. So, while that interim period, that would be a building without heat. And as bad luck would have it, if it's going to fail, I'm sure it would fail in the wintertime because it would only fail when the boiler was actually on. So, I would like to turn the podium over to Mr. Bustle, and he can speak to the project in a little more detail because there are quite a few benefits.
Thank you.
I'm Steve Bustle, Facility Director. As we spoke about last month, this project incorporates a couple of the schools and all the town buildings in upgrading to LED lighting. And then we also had included the middle school boilers on it mainly because they're old. We were trying to get them replaced. And right now, Utilities is offering a special incentive, a total of $200,000 incentive back if you have these boilers installed by the end of this year, which is why we were bringing it forward last month. Like I said, last month, we were getting the boilers ready to bring online. We had them filled last week. This morning was the first time we fired them off. Everything was fine in the morning. In the afternoon, number one boiler let go, spilled its water all over the floor. So, we had to secure that, and now we're trying to hit number two, our backup boiler, online. I think we may have an issue with the circulator pump, but I'll let you know about that later. Do you have any questions you'd like to ask?
Does anybody have any questions? Thanks for the photo. Demonstrates the gravity of the situation, and we appreciate your coming tonight to give us the most recent update.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. I will now open the public hearing for comment. If anybody wishes to speak regarding the appropriation, please come to either podium. State your name and address, please. Does anybody wish to speak? Does anybody? Mr. Kislik?
John Kislik, 65 Forestville Avenue. Looks like I'm going to be the big mouth tonight. You know, when this first came out in the paper, it was again like used car salesman horse and pony show by the town manager again with this thing, "It has to be done by December." That's a lot of nonsense because Eversource will constantly have programs. They want to sell electricity and gas. Now with this new thing saying the boiler let go, I think you should bring in some contractors and see if it can be repaired. And one of the reasons I'm saying that is I believe that you had a capital improvement plan for that school, that you were going to also try to renovate as new in a couple more years, and that's when the boilers were supposed to be done. The way I see this is I think you're trying to spend down some of that $10 million in our slush fund, and you're using this as a way to spend that $10 million down. I've been telling you for years that you shouldn't put the final payments from the schools into that slush fund. We're looking good to the state that we have $10 million, and we're rich, and we don't. But this is how I look at it. This is something that I think you're just trying to do to spend down that $10 million. And I think you should have some contractors, qualified contractors, look at that boiler and see what they can do with it. If sections have to be replaced, they can replace sections. We did it at the high school. When they went from steam to hot water, some sections had pinholes. They changed them, and it probably can be done here, too. I'm asking this council to look at it. The other thing that I forgot to say at the last one, I want to see this council have some discussion on these votes. You answer to the public, and I, as one, would like to see how each of you feel on these items you're voting on. You know, don't sit up there like a bunch of turtles on a log and just, "Yes, yes, yes." Me and a lot of other people are tired of seeing this rubber stamping stuff. Have some discussion of how you feel on each articles and each issue so we know how you feel. We elected you. If we don't like the way your answer is, well, you won't get our votes next time. Involve the public. We're on the top of the organizational chart. We're over you. You're supposed to answer to the public, and I'd like to see more input from this council when you're voting on these items. Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak to the public hearing? Mr. Frangos? No? Mr. Frangos?
Lou Frangos, 10 Fairbanks Street. The question is just for clarity. Eversource Energy Opportunities Program, I thought that was just lighting. Are they going to be the ones installing and doing the work on the boiler? Because it says additional appropriations for Eversource. Is Eversource going to be doing the boiler program?
Eversource doesn't do any of the work. There's contractors that do the work. And Eversource does do the gas measures with the oil and electricity. It's called a comprehensive program.
Again, clarity. Why would you put it in? Thank you. Why would you put it into Eversource? Why don't you put it in a separate referendum or whatever it takes to have the boilers done? Like the turfing the field or anything? Why is Eversource tied into this appropriation, additional appropriation?
Eversource is providing the incentive grant, and Eversource is also gas as well. There are electricity and gas. So, it's a comprehensive program. So, they're providing the funding to this program. So, Eversource, again, is not doing the work, but they're providing the funding for both. And you've got to do both of them together in order to get the funding, in order to get the incentive grant. It's the way it's structured.
I'm sorry. Just could you do that? I'm a slow learner. Repeat that one more time for me, please. How does Eversource tie into the boiler?
Eversource is providing the incentive grant to do the work, which includes the boiler. The boiler is a gas boiler. They are also a gas company, and they also provide electricity. They sell gas and electricity.
So, they're going to give us the money for the boiler?
Yes.
Thank you very much. That's all you had to say.
I said it twice. Actually, I said it three times.
Does anybody else wish to speak to the public hearing? Mrs. Saunders?
Hi, Andrea Saunders, 55 Fawn Drive. I'm actually, you know, I want to speak to you as the Board of Ed Chairwoman. Anybody that knows me knows I'm not one to just spend money. But, you know, I've heard Mr. Bustle, Dr. Brummett talk about the boiler, and it was only a matter of time when it was going to fail, and it has apparently. And I appreciate Mr. Kislik's concern, but I think after 25 years, Mr. Bustle knows if it's dead or not. I don't know that we need to have contractors and spend money on that, and I think that you guys should consider moving forward with it. I realize the state budget has everybody very concerned, but if it's spending, you know, $1 million to fix something that's pretty much dead, or spending the 500 and whatever it is, $50,000, $60,000 for a brand-new boiler that'll get us through until the middle school is renovated like new, I think that's something we should. To me, it just makes sense. And while I understand that, you know, we are not replacing things in the middle school for the anticipation of renovating like new. So, we're not looking for things. We're not talking, you know, we're not asking for things to be replaced that we know when the renovate like new happens, we may have to just be pulled out. So, while I understand all that, we're at a kind of a crossroads here where it needs to get fixed or replaced, and I'm just asking you guys to consider Mr. Bustle's plan. Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? Yes, sir.
Joseph Gohar, 14 Perrin Road, Plainville, Connecticut. Just an insight on the boilers. Excuse me. I've been doing that for a long time, probably 28 years now, that's what I do, steam fitter. I'm working at a school district now, but with the boilers, any boiler that has sections that are cracked, they're made out of sand. I don't know if they're H.B. Smith, well, I'm not claiming what kind of boilers they are, if you guys know.
Can you give a picture?
Okay. They're not, they're probably tubes. They're tubes. They could be welded. They do them in two days with the right contractor, just to save time. I mean, it's just a suggestion. They do it all the time. I don't know what contractor you have, probably several quotes you're getting from people. But we have the same Cleaver Brooks at the school I work for. They're big monster boilers, and they were welded. And it saved them like two years, the bottom two years, just, you know, maybe till the new school, or it's up to you. I mean, they can be welded, the tubes, the sheets. Takes about two, three days, to be honest with you. Just a suggestion, if, you know. That's it.
Just as a point of information, any repair of the boilers is going to have to last more than two years, probably five years before the project's even considered and even comes up on the radar screen. And it's probably seven or eight years before realistically, you know, anything's going to move forward. Any repair to the boiler would have to last a significant period of time, not a short period of time, just for your information.
Yeah, those tubes come in, they wall them in a corner, they pressurize them.
I'm just telling you, we're not talking about two years, that's all.
Does anybody else wish to speak to the public hearing? Joanne?
Joanne Edman, 166 West Main Street. What, people are just naturally suspicious of spending this money, that does the boiler really need it? Because, what, two years ago, you had a few broken seats over at the middle school auditorium, and what did you do? You ripped up the whole auditorium, and you replaced everything. The seats, the rugs, the this, the that, whatever, whatever that auditorium had got brand-new, replaced with brand-new, to the tune of, I believe, $90,000. And that was way before middle school's going to get the complete makeover. And I remember being shown one locker that was dented, but the principal showed myself and somebody else that the whole thing was going to be torn out. So, people get suspicious, and that's why we're questioning everything. And it's just only natural that, you know, when money's being spent, it's our money. Squeezing the taxpayer to death, you know? So, be careful.
Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? Anybody else? Okay. Thank you for your comments. I will close the public hearing and move on to the next item on our agenda. Minutes of the previous meeting. May I have a motion to approve?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to accept the minutes of September 11th, 2017, special and regular meeting.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Number four, announcements and reports. Does anybody have any reports or announcements to make?
I'll set this one.
Okay. Carrying on. Appointments and resignations. We have an appointment tonight that I know of.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to appoint Mark Chase as a regular member of the Economic and Development Agency for term ending November 9th, 2018.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Do we have any other appointments or reappointments tonight?
Madam Chair, I have a few.
Okay.
They're all term-ending the same time, so I'm going to combine them. I have three reappointments to the Aviation Commission for term ending October 30th, 2020. Robert Mastriani, Richard Petrowski, and Reed Clemmons.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on the motion or the appointments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Are there any other appointments?
I have two more reappointments for the Capital Project Building Committee, also the same term-ending August 1st, 2023, Thomas Arkery and Thomas Loza.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Are there any other appointments?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to reappoint Peter Atuno for term ending 10/122 for the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Second.
A motion in a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Are there any others?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to appoint Tina Gugliotti for term-ending 9/30/18 to the Central Connecticut Tourism.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Are there any other appointments? No? That's it. Okay. Okay. Thank you for that. Moving on, report of the town attorney, Attorney Mastriani. Do you have anything for us?
I do not.
Okay. Thank you. On to the report of the town manager, Mr. Lee.
Thank you. I just have a couple of items. The first is the Farmington Canal Heritage Trail update. A collaborative workshop to refine the preferred alignment for the Farmington Canal Trail through Plainville will be held on Wednesday, October 18th. The workshop will be held at the high school cafeteria from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. The meeting will begin with an open house where attendees can provide feedback on specific sections of the proposed trail. At 7:00 PM, there will be a presentation that will give an overview of the process used to narrow the alternatives into the preferred alignments. After the presentation, there will be a question-and-answer period, followed by another opportunity to provide feedback in an open meeting setting. Notices of the collaborative workshop will be mailed to the persons that own property in close proximity to the proposed alignment and possible alternate routes that are being considered. Those notices will probably be mailed tomorrow. The proposed alignment and alternates can be found on the Gap Closure Trail Study website Our next item I have is the Capital Projects Building Committee update. The Capital Projects Building Committee met recently to discuss the status of the proposed project and to receive an update on the schematic drawings for Wheeler Elementary School. Representatives from KBA notified the committee that some additional environmental investigative work needs to be done at this time to move forward with the drawings. The work includes a Phase 1 environmental assessment and an asbestos-containing roof material inspection. material inspection to be performed by Eagle Environmental for $2,100 and $2,500 respectively, and roof test cuts to be performed by Silk Town Roofing for $1,795. Copies of the proposed work was provided in your meeting packages. I do want to recognize that Mr. Lou Francos attended the meeting and was able to get answers to some of his questions that he raised during the last town council meeting. Hope that's accurate. Next item I have is the Emergency Management Performance Grant application. The annual EMPG grant application is due to be sent to the state by October 15th. This small grant totaling approximately $2,000 is used to pay a portion of the salary for the Emergency Management Director. There is an item, I believe, under the amended new business, well, it's under new business, but the motion is added for some reason that got left out. That would authorize the manager to, quote, execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the town council regarding the grant. Last item I have before happenings is review of the Water Pollution Control Facility Upgrade Project flyer. A copy of the proposed flyer that will be mailed to the town residents was included in your meeting packages. Town staff is requesting feedback from the town council before it is mailed on November 1st, on or about November 1st. Don't necessarily need that right at this moment. If you have some comments on it, that would be fine. If not, I'd like to finalize it within the next week or so, because we have to do some preparation work in order to have it ready to go on November 1st.
Okay. Thank you.
Give a copy of that in the packages.
Any questions so far for the town manager or comments? Hi.
I'd like to turn it over to Scott Colby for just listing up some happenings.
Good evening. Over at Public Works, their scheduled bulk pickups will run through October 30th, 2017. All eligible residents must call CWPM at 860-793-6721 to schedule a pickup. When calling, you'll need to provide your name, address, phone number, and a complete description of the items to be collected. Calls placed by 3:00 p.m. on Friday can be scheduled for collection on Monday. Over at the youth department, the Plainville Coalition for Positive Youth Development is sponsoring a program for parents on October 3rd at 6:30 p.m. at the Middle School of Plainville. Chromebooks, the Internet and your child's digital world. Parents will learn about Chromebook use, in and out-of-school resources for parental controls, negative and illegal consequences of inappropriate use of technology. To register for this event, write to Tina Gruick at G-R-Y-C-U-C-T@plainvilleschools.org or her number at 860-793-0221, extension 2016. The fire marshal has a supply of 10-year battery-operated smoke alarms and carbon monoxide detectors available for residents that have a single-family home. Priority for distribution will be given to those on a fixed income and for those who may not be able to afford them. Installation is available if needed. Please contact the fire marshal at 860-793-0221, extension 218, to make a request. The town clerk's office would like to remind residents that there will be a municipal election held on November 7th at all four polling locations from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Absentee ballots will become available Friday, October 6th, at the town clerk's office. Some events over at the library. Tomorrow, Tuesday, October 3rd at 7:00 p.m. Join Tuesday Night Book Club as they discuss The Vanishing Year by Kate Moretti. On Wednesday, October 4th at 7:00 p.m., join the Through Hiking the Appalachian Trail Talk with Sam Duchesne, who completed a 2,180-mile, 14-state backpack trip through Springer Mountain, Georgia, to Mount Catodan, Maine. On Saturday, October 7th, join the library for their birthday celebration with some special events and activities, including birthday cake, a magic workshop with Christina the magician, and a balloon-making workshop. On Wednesday, October 11th, take a historic trip along the Old Canal with author Bob Madison, who will talk about his book, The New Haven and North Hampton Canal Greenway. This Rails to Trails Comprehensive Guide includes trail maps, trailhead descriptions, attractions, original watercolor paintings, and town histories. Over at the Senior Center, all month they're having energy assistance sign-up. Please call for more information at 860-582-7490. On October 3rd, the Veterans Benefit and Coffee Hour will take place at 10:30 a.m. at the Senior Center. Join Sherri Voight, a Veterans District aide for Congresswoman Elizabeth Estes' office, and Wayne Rue, Veterans Liaison for Hartford Healthcare at Home, for a free informative program on veterans' benefits. Ms. Voight, an Army veteran, will share information on federal and state veterans' benefits and describe how she can help vets to replace discharged documents, medals, and VA or branch records. Representative Estes' legislative initiatives to support veterans will also be discussed. This event is a free program and open to the public. On October 12th, they have Preventing and Coping with Identity Theft. At 9:30 a.m., the Senior Center will host a unique program on identity theft that will provide an overview on how to prevent identity theft, as well as to describe the effects of being the victim. The speaker, Eric Rodko, a professional counselor, will lay four personal experiences with identity theft, one of which resulted in his own legal name change. Please call the Senior Center to register for this program. And the Third Annual Plainville Pumpkin Fest will be held Saturday, October 21st, from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. And the last information I have is regarding the flu clinics that will be hosted here in Plainville. These are open to Plainville residents. The first one is being held, it was held today, from 11:00 to 1:00 p.m. They're also hosting one at Nazo's on Wednesday, October 4th, from 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. They're hosting one on Thursday, October 5th, from 10:00 to 12:00 p.m. at the municipal center. And Monday, October 16th, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the Plainville Fire Company. This information will also be posted under the happenings on the town's webpage.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Does anybody have anything for Robert or Scott with their reports?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I just would like to go back to, you were talking about the flyer for the Water Pollution Control Facility Upgrade, and I will share my comments on that. So, I know that some issue was made tonight in the public hearing with regard to the fees being raised. Unfortunately, the people here in town are not the people to complain to. We're being forced to make these improvements by the federal government and the state. I think a lot of effort went into trying to get us the reimbursement rate that we currently have in place, and I don't think we're gonna get any better deal than that. So, you know, I did vote early on to have the rate slowly increase rather than slamming people all at the end, and I think we need to continue forward with that plan. But in terms of the flyer, flyer's simple. It explains to people the dramatic reduction that we're being forced to employ against phosphorus in our discharge. I think it spells out in great detail all of the dollars that are involved where the grant comes in play. So, I think it's good. Hopefully, people will understand it and appreciate that we've done all we can do here in town.
Anybody else have anything? Okay, thank you. Okay, we're now in our public comment section of our meeting. During this time, we welcome the public to come and speak to the council. You may use either podium. Please state your name and address. You'll have one opportunity, and you'll be given three minutes to speak to the council. Does anybody wish to speak to the council? I don't know if we have a sheet. That can, just one second, we're gonna check and see if we have a sign-up sheet available. Okay, well, we have two different ones going, so I will...
Yellow is resident.
I'm sorry?
Yellow is resident.
Oh, I understand. Okay, thank you. Okay. All right, Roberta Loria.
Good evening, Roberta Loria, 18 Perrin Road. Thank you very much for your time. To make things easier for Carol in the minutes, I'd like to reiterate what I have said in the past, that is, I am opposed to any CRCOG and Steering Committee alignment, a proposal that will have an impact on any neighborhood in the town of Plainville, in particular Perrin Road, north of Johnson Avenue, and Johnson Avenue, east and west of Perrin Road. With your permission, Madam Chair, I would like to pose a couple of questions to the town manager for clarification regarding the trail information. He was kind enough to give everyone this evening.
Would you like to answer some questions tonight, Robert, or would you like to wait until we have our October 15th meeting regarding that?
I don't mind answering questions.
Thank you very much. Would it be possible, I know you talked about the gap, everything's on the Gap study website, would it be possible to include the impacted streets on the town website and possibly also include a link to the Gap Closure Study website, so it'll be easier for people to find?
I think we do have a link right now, but, yes.
Thank you. And could you also include on that, please, the particular areas? Some streets do not include the entire street. For instance, maybe numbers 1 through 15, Bank Street, or 10 through 18, Rosalie Avenue. So, then people will know it's, the impact it will have on them.
One of the maps that we've developed is a parcel map that shows the parcels that are gonna be impacted.
Okay.
So, we'll post that, and if you don't think, you think we need more, or you'd like more information, please let me know.
Thank you. Okay.
And you'll get that as part of your notice, too. On the backside of it, you'll see the parcel map, which we'll post online.
Okay, great, because I know the maps that have been in there, they're very vague in terms of the streets and information on them, so it makes it very difficult for people to really follow.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
Now, this new section, I just wanna make sure I understood on what you had said. On the website, the actual streets will be listed now on the Gap site. It's gonna actually say Bank Street, Rosalie Avenue, Pierce Street.
I think the parcel map will show you which streets are involved.
So, it'll be...
You'll see the streets.
Okay, so it'll be clear enough for everybody to know?
I think so.
Okay.
You tell me if, you know, if you see that there's an issue, we'll try to...
Okay, I will. Thank you. Thank you, that's all. I appreciate the clarification.
Next on the list is Catherine Lobella.
Good evening, Catherine Lobella. I'm a property owner at 50 Pierce Street. I oppose the trail that splits the Pierce Street neighborhood, as well as other residential neighborhoods in town. This proposed trail interferes with the privacy of your constituents and presents major safety issues. Tonight, I'd like to address safety issues with the proposed path. Over 100 vehicles from the Pierce Street condo complexes will have to pass through the trail users in order to access the street. With full knowledge of this issue, the town placed a traffic counter in an area on the street where this traffic pattern was minimized. According to a neighborhood hand count, the counter missed 80 vehicles exiting and entering the complexes during a four-hour period, and missed 112 vehicles overall on the street. At a recent meeting with the town manager, we were told that Pierce Street was chosen for the path as it had fewer driveways than other streets. When asked if the actual number of vehicles passing through the path from those driveways was taken into consideration, we were told no. We were also told that there had been no accidents on the street. Residents who lived there needed to inform the town that a speeding car hit telephone poles, interrupting power, and that a pedestrian was hit on the corner of Pierce and Broad Streets. Finally, we heard that there have been no accidents on the trail. There have been many. I've enclosed the following materials. Pictures of the Pierce Street accident from July 2016. Farmington Canal Heritage Trail material talking about an uptick of crashes on Route 20 in 2016 and 17. A map from the Farmington Canal Rail to Trail Association advising people that the trail is not danger-free, and that serious accidents involving hospital convalescences and police investigations have occurred. An NBC article of a critically injured woman struck by a car in Vernon. A WFSB article about a dirt bike crash in Vernon. Is it of any surprise to you that Pierce Street residents are upset? We learned that the location was considered in a 2009 study. It has been under consideration right along during this recent process, yet we were never asked to attend a meeting until our petition. Frankly, the town showed more concern about the impact of the path on the town garage than on the privacy and safety concerns of your Pierce Street constituents. I request that this statement and the attached materials be included as part of the public record of this meeting. Thank you.
I have an Art Moreno?
Moreno.
Moreno. Mr. Moreno?
Art Moreno, 22 Turtle Street, Bristol, Connecticut. I'm basically the curator for the Tomaso Nature Park. I had the opportunity about a month ago now to sit down with Mr. Lee, and we've come up with an idea that I come here, give you a quarterly report as to how the park is operating. So, this will be the last one for this year, because the park closes November 15th. So, what I have is this. Up to date, we've had 24 tours. I do the tours on Tuesdays, Thursdays, Saturdays. 176 people, that's not counting what I get as walk-ins. Okay? And walk-ins are just people that go down there for their lunches, or they take a break and they're walking through, so we don't get a good count on them. The age groups are anywhere from 6 to 70. The groups that I've been taking through, daycare centers, senior centers, science and biology classes that are learning about the habitat and wildlife, book clubs. I've had the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts down there making their badges. I've had a couple of them work on a project that I've worked on where we've marked 200 to 300 turtles to find out where they're migrating, because I'm getting people that are telling me they're ending up in their yards where the old Knights of Columbus used to be. So, we're gonna see if we can turn around and get them to stay in the park. I've talked to Mr. Lee. I'm gonna see if I can get a load of sand dumped down by the pond, so the turtles can turn around and lay their own eggs right in the park, not anybody's yards. We can get that done, and there should be no problem with that. Animals released, I've released a family of raccoons, one barn owl, nine rabbits. The new program that we're gonna do is any animals that I release, I will be turning around and getting ahold of Mr. Lee to let him know that I'm doing it. Okay? That's just to make sure that there's nothing sick and nothing carrying a disease through the park. Last thing I have, I have a couple of groups that have been calling me and telling me that they've had some sightings. We've had one bear with three cubs. The bat boxes down there are loading, so we're getting a lot of bats in there now. Three herring, three fox cubs, and like I said, we've marked 200 to 300 turtles. The ponds after the drought, they're pretty well filled back up to the level where they belong. The fish are active down there. So, what I'm hoping is that next year, we have just as good as we had this year. Okay? A lot of the tours, like I said, that I've been doing now are being with teaching of kids. Senior centers, they've come down to look for the birds. I believe next week, the last one I'm gonna have is people turn around talking about leaves changing already. So, they do go down in the park there and take a look around, so. But, like I said, that's our idea. You'll be seeing me more often, probably every quarter, or every, maybe even sooner than that. If I get a project going down there, I'll let everybody know, but I will be turning around being here more often. Thank you.
Thank you for doing that for us. It's very interesting for us that don't frequent it enough to get some of the ideas about who does and some of the education that goes on down there. So, we appreciate your effort in doing that. I look forward to the next one sometime in the spring?
Yeah, we open up the park in April.
Okay.
So.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak to the council?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Kathleen Marcian, 44 Shuttle Meadow Road, and I bring you good news.
Thank you.
I am the executive director of the Plainville Wind Ensemble. This is our 30th anniversary. We've been in this town 30 years, started from Ed Dickman in the old junior high school. I'd like to inform you that the Plainville Wind... that the Plainville Wind Ensemble had sent in an application to try out to perform in Buffalo, New York. We were against 200 other bands from throughout the United States, and we were selected of one of six bands to perform at the American Concert Band National Convention in Buffalo, New York in May of 2018.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Awesome.
And not only do we get to go and perform, our conductor at this time is Ken Bagley. Absolutely wonderful man. And we are also selected to, we're going to have a session with the, I just went blank on his name. I'm so excited, I can't stand it. But anyway, we're, Robert Smith, who is a composer and conductor, is going to give us an afternoon, almost like a master's lesson in performance. And then we are going to be performing one of his numbers also. The other thing that is happening along with our 30th anniversary is that we are having a piece commissioned for us by composer Scott Perkins. And we will be performing this in May in Buffalo and also at our spring concert that will be here at the Plainville Wind, Plainville High School. And what is important about this is that once we perform it, and he has his copyrights, of course, for it, from here on in, anyone who purchases the music, it will say, "Commissioned for the Plainville Wind Ensemble, Plainville, Connecticut."
That's an honor.
It's quite an honor. And we also thank, we are, for those of you who don't know, the Plainville Wind Ensemble, because we still have people go, we didn't know Plainville had a band. We started with 14 people 30 years ago. We are now up to 80. We perform every Tuesday at Plainville High School. And we are under the auspices of the Recreation Department of Plainville. And we absolutely thank the town for all their support that we've had throughout the years of being here. Thank you.
Thanks for that report. That's very exciting and must look forward to going there. Wonderful. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? Mr. Frangos?
Lou Frangos, 10 Fairbank Street. The first question I have for you, the August dashboard, was that released? Financial dashboard? Because I looked on the system and I saw June, July. I did not see August. Perhaps I missed it. I'm just asking.
We'll check on it for you.
Thank you. Number two is, I guess one of the, I'm not going to harp on this, but one of the things I'd like to bring up, this boiler issue thing again. And the reason I'm bringing this up is we've, the Town Council, the town, the residents, et cetera, et cetera, will turn around and will push for major projects like the Wheeler School. And attached to the Wheeler School project was a driveway, a parking and driveway, over a million dollars. In the meantime, we've had a boiler that's been going down the tubes. And nobody mentioned or said anything about it or worked on it. And what else do we have sitting in the school system right now that's broken? It appears we go after such major things, and all of a sudden, in comes half a million here, a million there. Who's watching all of this?
I just want to say one thing. I understand your frustration about that. And certainly anybody that owns a home or that maintains any property, these things happen. And they have to be addressed quickly. And I'm sure that the Facilities Director, along with his maintenance staff, have watched these boilers, have taken good care of them, and have been good stewards of the equipment. But sometimes ultimately, at that age, mine at my house failed. And I didn't want to have to replace that at the time it did, but I had to. You live in New England, you have to do that. So I understand the frustration, but the reality is, we need to take care of these things.
I understand it.
Just a couple of items.
Okay.
In response to that. Number one is that the Board of Education each year provides a five-year capital improvement plan, which for several years has included the need to replace the boiler. That was one of the reasons why the Town Council was looking at two projects to put forth to the voters. One was the Wheeler Elementary School project, and one was the middle school project. You may recall that because of the costs involved with both projects, the council, given the current financial environment, decided to, that the most, the more important project was the Wheeler School project, and they moved that one forward sooner. With the hopes that some of the mechanicals inside the middle school, although they knew they were past their useful life, were still operating, you know, in relatively good condition and could last longer than pushing the Wheeler School project back. So the council was aware, the Board of Education had made the council aware over the last several years that the boiler at the middle school, as well as other mechanical equipment, was, although still operating, was operating past its useful life. So they, you know, it was known by the Capital Projects Building Committee, by the Town Council, by the Board of Education. And we've had some discussion during the budget, you know, the annual budget process, especially as it relates to the capital improvement plan, that these were issues that were hanging out there. So, you know, it isn't something that just popped up at the last second and it was a big surprise. I think what was a surprise was that we were, I'm not sure it was a surprise, but I mean, it was hoped that the boiler would last longer. And unfortunately, it is not. It is not.
And may I also tie into that, thank you. May I also tie into that, you're looking at next year a middle school roof project?
Not next year, no.
I thought it was, did I stand correctly? Number three is that, you know, I live on Fairbank Street. I'm not affected by the bike trail or anything. But this heritage trail, is that state-funded?
Money comes funneled from the federal government through the state. Some of it is state, most of it is federal.
Will the town of Plainville receive money for whatever alterations or whatever we do to make that trail work?
We're anticipating that 100% of the cost of design and construction of this trail will come through grants from the federal and state government.
Thank you. The only thing I'm going to add to that, and that's I opened this, is, you know, Fairbank Street is not affected by the bike trail.
We could make that happen if you'd like.
No, thank you. No, what I've seen with these people are going through, I say, "No, thank you." I just want to respectfully say to our Town Council, you're impacting people's lives. And I know it's a wonderful thing to have with heritage trail, go from here to there and wherever, all right? But I hope a lot of consideration is taken into before something is finalized. And just because it was put on a blueprint. Blueprints can change. That's all I, this is an outsider speaking his mind. And the final thing, let's see. I lost what I was doing. I'm sorry. I just did my last point and I forgot. Oh, here's what it, I'm sorry. Mr. Lee already said part of it for me, gave me the lead in. I have been firing shots across the bow of the Town Council regarding the initial funding going into the Wheeler School project. Gentlemen, Mr. Lee, explain to me at the Capital Projects meeting, why it was, why the Town Council did what they did when they did it. And in essence, help me with this if I go off track. But capitalizing is, is money had to be put initially into the project to show the state we are indeed working on a project. I think that, is that correct, that we capitalize it? Capsulize it, yeah. And I thank you for, and now I understand why the council did it. And I have to say, I'm sorry about firing across the bow. But on the same token, I'm going to say this. What I am concerned about is any additional funding going in. The reason being is, and I'm sure, I'm sitting in the back of the room, and I'm sure our Town Council is looking at the same thing. If we keep pumping money into this without knowing what we're going to get back, and we don't get it, as the Town Council did say, the exact amount or nothing, how do we get the money we already put into the project? And that's why I say the caution of putting money into the project. And that's all I have to say, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council?
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Catherine Wade. I live at 50 Pierce Street. I'd like to oppose the trail on Pierce Street because of safety issues. And right now, there are cars that are parking on the side of the street. And they further narrow the street. So if the trail does go through, there's something going to have to be done with those cars. And I understand they're parking on the street because they don't have a second parking space where the condominiums are. So I'd like to raise my opposition to the trail on Pierce Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? Yes, ma'am?
Good evening. I'm Dorothy Amundson. I have property on 50 Pierce Street, as the other ladies do. And I am opposed to the trail mainly for the safety issues that will be involved. I can't imagine with the traffic coming in and out of the two condominium complexes that someone won't get hit by a car. And it probably will be a kid on a skateboard or a bike. They're not looking and watching for anything. They're just enjoying themselves, and God bless them. That's great. But not, not on Pierce. Pierce is dangerous enough. I know you don't consider it dangerous, but you don't live here either. We're always dodging cars coming out of our driveway. And there are parking trucks on the road. If you're coming one way, a truck is coming the other. You have to be very careful because it's narrow. And I'd just like for you to reconsider placing it on Pierce Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Nancy Blake. I live at 50 Pierce Street. And I would also like to oppose putting the bike trail, well, not bike trail, but the trail there. I tried to be really fair about this when I came to the last meeting. So what I've done many times now, even tonight before I came here, I walked out of my driveway and I went in both directions and, you know, tried to really look at it from the perspective of people using the trail, not just me coming out of my driveway. And I, I was really amazed at how poor a suggestion it would be to put that there. The only straightaway that is actually on that road is directly in front of our piece of the condo. Other than that, there are two curves with five driveways coming out of either side. And the side on East Street, those are businesses that park their cars. They pull in and have to back out. And this goes on all day. And those cars are almost on the sidewalk as it is. And like my neighbor said, we would just really like someone to take a, take a walk. Really look at this with open eyes. We're not opposed to a trail. I definitely am not. I think it's a wonderful thing for people to get out in nature and do things. That's why we have a park. That's why almost all the towns around us have parks. And we even put a skateboard park for the kids so that they would be safe. Riding skateboards up and down our street, or those scooters and things like that, those go really fast past these driveways. And like my neighbor said, it would only take a moment for something to happen. And that accident that happened two years ago, the young man took down the pole with the, what do you call that thing? Transformer? And then he ended with the pole down farther is where he landed. So two poles came down. It's, we would really, like I said, just like you to take another walk through and look at this with different eyes. Not just because we live there, but because we don't think it's a viable option. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? Yes, sir?
David Spencer, 127 Milford Street Extension. Back to the subject of the boiler. I think we heard an expert give you a little bit of advice. And I'm afraid that what he said is probably going to be ignored by all of you. You know, in my life, I've had to deal with welders here and there. And my opinion, the ones I've run into, they're kind of a special group of guys. They love what they do. For some reason, they're really, you know, working with their hands in that capacity. People have chosen that, love it. And I've seen some do miraculous and, you know, very good things. And we're spending like a million dollars here, 5 million there, 14.8 there. And now, now a boiler on top of all of that. And we have no idea what the end result of what's going on with the governor and the state is going to bring us. I would just implore you to look into the suggestion from the steamfitter who testified tonight. And I dare say, he probably knows more about boilers than everybody here combined. So I would take his advice and his suggestion to heart and maybe look into this before we get, you know, I mean, it'll be a stopgap measure for a few years, but sometimes that's the best choice to do. So I just would like to implore the council to look into it and see how feasible it is and, you know, weigh the costs and see what we can do. Because, I mean, just the state of the state, we have no idea how it's going to come down on us. Thanks.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak? Marilyn?
Good evening, Council. Marilyn Sharet, 18 Milford Street in Plainville. Well, it's nice to see so many people here. And residents speaking up for the things that they really believe in and that they stand for. I, for one, stand behind the steamfitter that got up a little while ago also. I really believe that you need to take the plugs out and hear what we're saying. We want you to investigate before you spend our money. It's going to take a couple of days probably for you to get your answers. But right now, we have the federal government in trouble. Our state is in trouble. Hartford's in trouble, ready to go bankrupt. And we better be counting our pennies. I say that very seriously. But I applaud him for getting up here and speaking. And I also applaud you for your comments, Dave. The other thing that I wanted to say is the project for the Rails to Trails, a state-mandated project.
Mandated?
Yes.
No.
Okay. Where is it actually coming from? Is it, is it somebody private that started it?
No. It's a, it's, they're federal funds that will be paying for this.
Okay.
The trail runs from New Haven to North Hampton, Massachusetts.
That I know.
So we are-
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, we're a stopgap in between Farmington and Southington.
Correct.
Correct?
That's right.
We're a stopgap.
We're a gap.
We're a gap in between-
A stopgap, a gap.
Yeah.
We're a gap.
All right, excuse me for my incorrect word.
Right.
Okay, we're a gap.
Correct.
Why do we have to have it? Why, what, I just got done saying, we're all in financial trouble. The state doesn't have the money. The federal government doesn't have the money. We sure don't have the extra money either. We don't need it. If you really have to have it, instead of going through all these neighborhoods, If you really have to have it, instead of going through all these neighborhoods, you have a bike trail going right down Farmington Avenue. Go down to Broad Street, cut over, and go down to South Washington, cut down, go to the park. Otherwise, abandon it. That's my personal opinion. The other thing, the dog park. Again, a waste of our money, our tax dollars. We need to start counting pennies. We need to start counting our dollars and leaving them in our pocket. We just can't afford this. Everybody sees dogs being walked every day. Am I right? Everybody walks their dogs all over town. We don't need a park. Simple. Save your money. Save our money. Again, it's my opinion. But I honestly think you're really doing a disservice by all these people that live on Pier Street and any of these other neighborhoods that you're attempting to go through. Rosely Avenue is one of my old neighborhoods. I'm sorry, but that's not an area to put a walkthrough. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not spoken? Joanne?
Joanne Edmund, 166 West Main Street. Again, I'm going to forego the prayer, which actually, it's only a couple of lines, and the town council really needs all the support they can get because prayer is important to making decisions. And you've got a lot to make, some pretty hard ones, too. And I want to say something, I think we should all say our prayers for those in Las Vegas, a pretty horrendous, terrible thing that's happened yesterday. And I think they could use all the prayers, the families and people that were killed and wounded, should be in everybody's thoughts and prayers. Amen to that. Now, the trail situation. I went to that meeting last Tuesday. And as far as I'm concerned, it was a sales pitch again for, to, it's like shoving this whole project down people's throats. That's all I can think of is that, oh, they want it, they want it, they want it. And the people don't want it. They don't want to have their streets invaded. They don't want it to be, it's something that's intrusive to traffic, to neighborhoods, and you can't do it. Just let, those that are on the trail that come from Farmington, let them get through town as best they can. You've got markers all over the streets wherever you go. And they're making it through now. And, oh, they can head for the park and get through the best they can there. So I think that's something that, I just, it's just being made too much of. It's being pushed too hard. And I don't, I don't like, I didn't like it when you had a meeting at 2:30 in the afternoon. I thought that was a little, like somebody did say already, sneaky. And people are in work at that time, people affected. Nobody was notified that there was going to be that meeting except the steering committee. So it's just one of those things that it's not being handled right. And I think that better look at this real hard, make the right decision. I know the decision's going to be made after the election, but you've got the spotlight on you guys because you're going to be making the final decision. And as far as the boiler's concerned, I got to say one more thing about it. You're going to spend $2 million over there at the high school on that parking lot and surrounding area of asphalt and tennis court ramp. And yet you're asking for additional dollars for a boiler. Why don't you take that money and, well, I still think the best way out of this is to have it repaired. And that's my final word on that.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not spoken?
John Kisslick, 65 Forestville Avenue. Hope you didn't mean spoke at all because it's number three. Sorry that I missed the last council meeting. I don't know if I was paranoid, but somebody told me that probably because I was on vacation out of town, the council changed the date from the 18th to the 11th, so I wouldn't be here and harp on you people. Anyway, there's still a lot more meetings for me to attend. You know, outside of these council chambers, for the most part, you people are really great people, and I like you. I'm friends with some of you. But something happens to you when you sit up on that dais. I was thinking about it. Is it high altitude and the oxygen is thin and you forget that you were elected by the people down here? You know, and the people are great overall, but you got to see it from our side. And we're not happy with the way a lot of things are running. And our CPOA had our picnic two Sundays ago, and we discussed a lot of issues, a lot of town issues. And I'm just hoping that, because we discussed those issues, that somebody doesn't file a Freedom of Information complaint on us, like we did something illegal by talking about town issues. So what I want to bring up is I hope this council doesn't think that I was making up a story when I said I was called and told that I could not collect signatures on town property. If you want to know who I told, because they asked at the meeting, they wanted to know who it was, so I called Councilman Ciato and I told him. You can talk to him, and he'll tell you who told me that. But I was thinking about that. You're going to have an election in a short time. You're going to have all you people on town property campaigning with signs and everything. Did you get permission to do that, or is this something we do every year? I believe it's something we do every year. So, Madam Chair, when you made that suggestion that we should have maybe an ordinance, that didn't sit good with me. I said, there's a basic freedom. And I felt bad, especially coming from you.
Well, John, you know, elections are controlled not by the town, but by the elections.
Right. But I mean, you're going to be on town property with all your signs.
There are rules about where we can be on those. And we abide by them.
I was 75 feet away from the opening door to Town Hall. But the other thing, too, as far as that library board of directors, I feel they might have control of what happens in that building, but I don't feel they should outside. And I'll tell you why. When, quite a few years ago, when the manager brought again his horse and pony show to the town, to Senior Center, to try to get that driveway through, we had a whole group of us set up behind the library collecting signatures to defeat that. The people won that one. There would have been a driveway between all those apartments right through the library, real dangerous. And nobody stopped us from that. I think the board of directors was fine. But then we had a different director, who was a really great guy. And the board shouldn't have anything to say on town property outside. They can direct their building the way they want. One last thing, it's just a statement.
You've got a lot of time, stuff you could wrap up.
Wrap it up.
That'd be good.
Our town charter, Chapter Four, Manager, Section Four, Powers, the powers of the town manager. He has no control over anyone elected, appointed by the governor, legislature, or appointed by the town council. I've been hearing some things that there's like intimidation and different things with these different commissions from friends that are telling me. And I just want the public to know and anybody on the commissions, he has no authority over anybody that you appoint on these committees and commissions. That's all I have to say on that. Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not spoken? Anybody else? Okay. Thank you for all your comments. Move on to our next order of business. We have no old business, so we're going into new business.
Madam Chair.
I have several motions. Yes, sir.
Motion for the town council acting as the water pollution control authority to increase the sewer user rate by 4.8% for the period November 1st, 2017, to October 31st, 2018.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Madam Chair, I just have a comment. I agree with Councilman Saunders. We came up with a plan, I think it was three years ago now, to increase the rates. And really, part of that was the actual project itself is one thing, you know, the cost of the project, but it's the ongoing expenses that is actually tougher for us to absorb. So I think we have to stick to this plan that we have with the information we have.
Okay. Anybody else have a comment?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Yeah. I agree, too, that we should stick to the plan that was decided on a number of years ago. In fact, it was actually before I was on the council, but I was here as a member of the public for a number of those meetings. There was an extensive presentation, and I think there was a lot of, recall, a lot of very careful discussion about which route to go. And I agreed at that time that this was the proper one, and I still feel that way.
Okay. Anybody else?
I will concur with both of those thoughts. There was a, we did go to the extent of having an outside company come in and do a study regarding our water pollution control plant, regarding what we're going to be, what we have been mandated to do and what that ongoing cost is going to be. It's not something we take lightly. We all have to pay those. Everybody sitting up here is going to pay those increases as well. So we're not immune to what we're asking everybody to do, but we are required to do this. And I hope when you get the brochure that the town manager spoke of, you'll read it thoroughly. It gives a very good presentation as to what the council is asking you to vote for and what we're going to be expected to do to keep the water pollution control plant in compliance. If you do have any questions, please feel free to call the town and certainly call us. We'll do everything we can to answer that. But I encourage you, when you get that in the mail, do read it. It has a lot of information that's very important to understand.
Okay, there are no other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number two.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to appropriate $580,000 from account 0100-000-32110-000 on assigned fund balance to account number 0100-315-53513-2018 Electricity PTE Energy for participation in the EverSource Energy Opportunities Program with the PTE Energy.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just want to make sure I understand, from the last meeting, we talked about we needed to have this, if we were going to move forward with it, we needed to do it by the second meeting in October. Is that correct?
We had indicated that the incentive grant needed to be, that the boiler needed to be installed by December 31st in order to get the incentive grant. So we had...
What are the lead times on the equipment?
With the lead time and the equipment, we figured the last moment you can make the decision is probably mid-October.
Okay. So if we went to the 16th, if we backed into it from that angle, we'd still be okay?
Well, we'd have to...
Yes. It'd still be okay. What we're saying is if you wait two weeks, it gets colder out, and while they're replacing that boiler, we may have to bring in some temporary heat. So it's going to cost us some additional dollars.
Understood. But I know originally, we had discussed that. And given that we're missing two council members tonight, I'm wondering, you know, if it's really that big a deal for us to float this another two weeks.
I guess it depends on, I mean, your choice. It's your choice.
I'm going to have to call the contractor then and tell him to hold off on ordering
Okay. I thought we had said we had until the, so even if we had the public hearing tonight, we could then take the input from the public hearing and come back on the 16th.
We sent you information that said that he would, he was working on moving forward. If the council made a decision tonight, he could order, he was in a position to order the equipment right away. There's no cost to the town if you decide to delay it.
Okay.
He was just ready to move forward at this point in time. We told him that, that there was a chance that the council may wait till the 16th.
All right. I mean, I intend to vote in favor of it, just so we're clear. But I, you know, I want to make sure that in the event, since we are missing two council members, that we can potentially postpone this until the next meeting.
If I can just make an observation. This motion is to appropriate the money. The second, the next motion is to actually enter into the contract.
I understand.
So this motion is to appropriate the money so that it's available if we decide to go forward with the contract.
Yeah.
There are two steps to this.
I'd like to point out a couple of things that wasn't brought forward. It was brought forward at the last meeting, but maybe not this evening. Participating in this program is, it is anticipated and expected that there's going to be a cost savings each year on the operating side. That the cost savings, at least in the first several years, will be in the, would be in the, about $56,000 to $57,000 a year, cost savings for the first four years. And after the fourth year, the savings would increase to $83,000. So this project is going to pay for itself. It's not spend the money and not get some return on it. So I think it's, I think it's important to point out that it isn't just spending money and not getting a return on the money. That this project will pay for itself within an eight-year period, probably about the time that we're going to replace the boiler to begin with. So, you know, at the earliest. So it isn't, it isn't money that's being, you know, wasted, at least in my opinion.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Let's put my input.
Sure.
I have to say, I mean, I do appreciate the gentleman that stood up as far as repairing and the folks out there that thinks, you know, repairing may be the best route to go. Just looking at it from, I guess, my view would be that I think we are, like the town manager said, looking at a five-to-10-year period, you know, minimum, that we would not be looking to replace these boilers. So I would be, I guess, from my standpoint, the better investment of a new boiler with less maintenance, knowing that it's more dependable, I guess, would be the option that I would take personally. And like I said, seeing that it's probably 10 years before we do any other work on the building, at least the way I see it. So if you wanted to wait, I mean, it's, I don't know what the consensus is. I mean, I intend on voting for it either way.
To clear up what I was saying, I wasn't advocating waiting, but if we weren't going to get five votes tonight for the appropriation, to me, if you approve the appropriation as a body, you're telling the town manager and the superintendent and Steve Bussell that we're going forward and we're committing to it. And I just want to make sure, you know, we're all on the same page. If we're not, then I'd rather have a full council. That was my only thinking. But I'm prepared to vote on it tonight.
We're being told, and it's our understanding, that the incentive grants are going away. With all due respect to a comment that was made earlier, you know, that's what we're being told. So we, so if we don't move forward with this project, there's a distinct possibility that we're going to lose a $200,000 grant to help pay for this. Which means if we do this after January 1st, you know, we'll be doing it, you know, mostly on our own, on our own nickel. So, you know, sometimes the people who make suggestions with regards to, well, you can do this or you can do that, they're not the ones that have to deal with it if that doesn't, that doesn't play out. We're giving you the best available information that we have, you know, in front of us today. And, you know, we're not, you know, we believe that this equipment needs to be replaced, needs to be replaced now, and there's a justification for it. And again, if it fails, it's a closure of school for a period of time and all those types of items. I think the longer you put the decision off, you certainly can wait till the 16th and not lose, not lose the incentive grant. But, you know, we'd like to have some type of indication if you're going to delay it tonight so we can, you know, at least gear up to people who are going to move forward this as soon as possible in order to get this project done. forward with this as soon as possible in order to get this project done.
Again, I just wanted to make it clear that, you know, if voting in favor of this tonight, as far as I'm concerned, for the appropriation is also a vote in favor of actually signing the contract and getting the equipment on order. So as long as everybody else is ready to go forward, I'll, I'll withdraw any reservations.
It's one of the reasons why we have an unassigned fund balance is for these particular circumstances. And, you know, I think it's an appropriate, you know, use of the money. It's an unfortunate timing with regards to what's going on, you know, around the state. But we can't ignore the fact that we have a boiler that's down in a school that has so, has outlived its useful life. It has had repairs over the years, and it isn't as if it was working fine for 25 years, and now it's failed. There have been repairs made on this boiler.
And I also, one last thing, I do want to go on record as saying, there are issues that have come up every year in the budget under capital improvements for the school district that have been there since before I got on the council. They're still there, and they'll still be there 10 years from now when we start looking at it renovated as new. So I, I do get that we, we tend to push off things as far as we possibly can. With that, I'll, I'll leave it be.
Anybody else want to make a comment?
Madam Chair, my inclination when I came to the meeting tonight was to probably go with waiting two more weeks, you know, being the eternal optimist, thinking perhaps the state budget would be, would be finalized, and we would just all have a little more peace of mind going with this right now. But of course, we didn't have the information on the boiler that just recently died when, you know, prior to this meeting. So that certainly is influencing the way I feel about it. I could still certainly live with waiting two more weeks, but I think also, you know, my tendency would be to go forward.
I understand, and your colleagues are not here tonight.
Correct.
And so they are an important part of our group. I think, I will take a little bit different approach. Appropriating the funds is one step that we have to do, and I, I think it's a good thing to do that tonight, making the final decision. If you would feel more comfortable waiting until we have a full council, I would be, I'm fine with that as well.
I'm fine with that.
But I think taking care of the appropriation, we had the public hearing, that's, that's one step that's got to happen irrespective.
Anybody else? Okay. There are no other comments? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Number three. Who's the brave one that's going to make that one, Danny? Go ahead.
Actually, I'm going to make it. Madam Chair, motion to authorize the town manager to execute the EverSource Energy Opportunities Program proposal with PTE Energy.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Comments?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move that we postpone this until the 16th.
Second.
I have a motion to postpone to the 15th, and I have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That will be on our next agenda item, next agenda. Number four.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to adopt a resolution entitled authorizing resolution of the Plainville Town Council regarding the Emergency Management Performance Grant.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number five?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve the revised tax funds as listed on the addendum.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Number eight. Other discussions? Mr. Lee, have you anything else for us to...
I do not. Thank you.
Madam Chair, plain and order.
Number eight. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, motion to move into executive session for union negotiations.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.